Good evening, everybody. Today is June 20th, June 4th. Eight o'clock town hall. It is the planning and zoning meeting. The agenda starts with an executive session and a public hearing. Public hearing and then a general meeting towards the end. Jeremy, executive session?
Yes. Town Council's still working on getting some materials to review with the Commission. He will be returning to the Commission for an executive session on June 25th. Didn't have enough materials to proceed tonight, so that'll be June 25th instead.
And there was two items in there.
There's a number of pending litigation items that he was going to discuss with the Commission.
Oh, Louisa.
He's pulling them together for Commission members and hopes to be able to sit down with you to summarize those.
Okay.
How many?
Two.
Oh.
So Louisa's delayed.
John Louisa has said, you know what? Rather than delaying it and giving you pieces tonight, we'll just meet with you in a few weeks and have two prepared things to discuss.
Perfect. Okay. That's an executive. Public hearing. Our first item is continuing for a public hearing on Darian zoning regulations. Liz, can you help us out, please?
Sure. Item number one, continuation of public hearing regarding proposed amendments to the Darian zoning regulation COZR number three dash 2019, put forth by Pemberton 16 LLC, proposal to add a new section to the five nine seven, sorry, section five nine seven to the Darian zoning regulations to allow the creation of housing for persons 55 years of age or older within the Leroy West Affordable Housing Overlay Zone where one member of at least 80 percent of the occupied units be 55 years of age or older. The full text of the proposed zoning regulation amendment is on file and available in the Town Clerk's office and the Planning and Zoning Office for inspection and online.
Jeremy.
Yes, Attorney Robert Maslin, representing Pemberton 16 LLC, emailed me late in the afternoon asking that the matter be further continued to June 25th. He's working on some revised materials. So that's as far out as the Commission can continue it to. So we'll continue this to 8:00 PM, Room 206, on June 25th.
That's as far as we can push it out.
That's correct. Let me just make sure it's Room 206. I'm not 100 percent sure.
Number two?
The second on your list. Go ahead, Liz, please.
Proposed amendment to the zoning map COZM number four dash 2019, put forth by WRE LLC, proposal to amend the Darian zoning map to rezone a 0.22 acre portion of 671 Boston Post Road from one family residential, one-third acre, to designed business one, DB1, or designed business dependent on unrelated pending application number CZR one dash 2019 and COZM one dash 2019 before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and to apply the designed business and residential overlay zone to that 20, .22 acre portion to match the zoning designations of the balance of the property. The amendments to the zoning district boundaries would run coincident with the property's northernmost lot lines. The subject property is shown on assessors map number 16, as lot number 64 and number 65. The proposed zoning map amendments are on file and available for review in the Town Clerk's office.
Jeremy.
Sure. This is an application to take a lot which has been split zoned for many years and move the zone boundary line from the middle of the property all the way to the northern property line to be coincident with the property boundary. You have in your package two letters of support from neighbors. The standard for the Commission is whether the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with town plan of conservation and development.
Is it my understanding that lot 65 is the residential piece and lot 64 is the commercial piece?
No.
65.
64 is the commercial. It's the Hallsett Realty.
I know. So the lot is on the list.
I understood.
I got it. We've been trying to change these things for the last probably four years. So please state your name for the record.
My name's David Hawes, H-A-W-E-S. I'm the managing member of the owners, WRE LLC.
Okay. So the rear portion of the lot, of the combined lots, 64 and 65 is zoned residential, the front portion is zoned commercial.
That's correct.
So you're asking us just to change the rear portion from residential to commercial, but there's no application to build anything out at this time?
Correct.
Okay. This, for the Commission's record, we've done this, I'm going to say at least three or four times under my tenure. I don't know why it wasn't picked up the last, the last time.
Well, we did, you may recall that when we talked about putting together the proposal that's now before the Commission, a separate application, this property was discussed as whether the Commission wanted to include it or exclude it. It was decided at the very last minute not to include it in the separate proposal, and soon thereafter, Mr. Hawes put together a separate distinct application, which is before you now. The submitted survey shows the building, the parking lot, there's a fence now on the property. It's a white fence in the back. I'll call it along the zone line. There's trees behind the fence. There's the Goodwise River on the adjacent property to the east, but at the time the Commission was discussing other properties, you decided not to include this, and this is a separate application.
If I can, if I can ask, had we included this in the larger, no, put it a different way. This application has the same effect as if we had included this in the earlier.
Right. The premise is the same. The concept is the same. What Mr. Hawes is proposing is very similar to some of the other zone changes that the Commission's currently considering for other properties in town without going into details on those. There's a number of them.
Which you already voted on.
Yes.
Well, they deliberate. They haven't voted yet, but soon.
Well, in April, it's in the minutes that you voted on four properties on the Post Road.
To include them in the proposal, but you're right, there were four out of seven they decided to include. As I said, the most affected neighbor, Mr. Kwan of 44 Fairview, sent a letter of support.
Yes, and I had an oversight with 42 that I should have reached out to them personally. I thought it was a neighbor who previously we weren't getting along with. He was dumping on the property.
That's a good idea to get into.
Wasn't a good neighbor, anyway. So it was my fault not to approach 42.
But you sent written notes.
Everything's there.
That's correct.
Jeremy, I did not see the letters of support. Did I miss them in the packet?
I thought we sent them. There's one dated May 21. Philip and Susan Kwan, doing their concern as an adjacent property owner located at 44 Fairview Avenue. We're in favor of the applicant's request to change the zone line to be consistent with the property line at the northernly portion of the property. George Vogel, who is to the west of this, as an adjacent property owner located at 679 and 685 Boston Post Road, we are in favor of the applicant's request to change the zone line to be consistent with the property line at the northernly portion of their property. We also filed this with the Darian Town Clerk. It's been on record in the Town Clerk's office for the record. William Seymour Associates put together a meets and bounds description of the entire subject property, which would be the new zone boundary line.
Mr. Hawes, I have a quick question. How long have you owned the property?
Since 1997.
And just out of curiosity, how, why have you not asked for this?
Well, no one ever could tell us why the line was where it is.
But you were aware of it for just the property.
Oh, yeah. The research that we've done, this property was over five acres. I have a map from 1929. Fairview was not even there, and this lot is designated at least on three sides. I'm told by Jeff McDougall from William Seymour Associates that when the zone lines were established downtown, particularly DB1, there was, it was very random. They just took a measurement off the Post Road and drew a line. So there's no, there's no rhyme or reason to why these things are not following property lines. In fact, section 314 says specifically, zone boundary lines are intended to follow lot lines.
That's agreed. There is, your property might be no rhyme or reason, but on the Post Road, all the, a lot of the other properties, the lot lines are 100 feet back, so there is a rhyme or reason on some of the other sites, maybe not particularly two years, but the rest. Do you have anything else to add?
No, I don't.
Commissioners?
I'm not.
Anybody in the public have anything to add to this application? Seeing none, motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second, cause in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Hearing closed. Commission will deliberate next week.
Thank you. I would like to amend the agenda, Jeremy.
Sure.
And change the batting order from 16 West Elm and put 20 Birch Road first.
Sure, we can do that. The applicant is here. We can explain a little bit about the application.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll second. You have to sign a second for your motion to change the agenda or not?
Is it? Yes, okay. All in favor? Great. Agenda changed.
Okay. So 20 Birch Road?
Hold on, let Liz read over it, please.
Landfilling and regressing application number four, five, seven, Charles Ruler, 20 Birch Road, proposal to regrade the rear yard to create a level yard and to perform related site development activities. The subject property is located on the east end of Birch Road, east side of Birch Road, approximately 1,000 feet north of its intersection with Boston Post Road, and is shown on assessors map number 13, as lot 39 in the R1 half.
You have plans prepared by Carol Guthrie, landscape architect, who's here tonight, which show the proposal to regrade the backyard to make it a little bit flatter. Right now, the houses are up higher, and then its backyard slopes greatly down towards wetlands in the far back of the property, near where the fence is, it's a plantings. So what they're looking to do is basically cut a little bit near the house and fill in the back so a more gentle slope. The drainage patterns will not change. It's a changing grade of eight inches at its max, less than a foot, but the general premise is the water will still flow fro, to the east away from the house towards the wetlands in the backyard.
So this one, which is this the, this one you're talking about? It shows the beach?
That's correct. So there's a cut at the top, and when I say the top, right behind the retaining wall behind the house, and fill as you get closer and closer to the wetlands. In this case, the Town Environmental Protection Commission has approved the project. I believe you have a copy in your packets of the EPC approval, which was granted very recently. Carol Guthrie, landscape architect, is here to answer any questions.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Carol Guthrie.
Please tell us what you're going to do.
I'm sorry?
Please tell us what you're going to do with the property.
We plan to regrade to create a more level yard. Essentially, what we propose to do is to take material from the top of the hill and roll it down the hill in order to take this and turn it into that.
Is there any additional fill being brought on the property?
It could be that we would need to bring in some small amount of top soil because the soil that's there now is probably, a lot of it is excavation. It's a new house. It's not wonderful soil. We may have to bring in an inch just to be able to grow a lawn, but no, I don't think we're going to need a lot of material.
So you bring in, you might bring in top soil, but not necessarily quote-unquote fill?
No fill, no.
Okay. Then your total grade change, Jeremy, is two feet?
At one point, it might be a foot.
No, I believe the maximum grade change would be eight inches. In other words, we're going to steal eight inches from the top 40 feet of the property, and so in other words, lower it eight inches here, raise it eight inches below so that the plane tilts.
Yes.
But the overall change is not two feet, it's maximum eight inches.
Okay. I understand. Sometimes people bring in boards, but we don't, that's fine.
Yeah.
Any questions? Jennifer?
Do we have any issues with the lot lines having?
No, EPC has approved it. There's wetlands way in the far back by the east property line where the fence is, and they approved the work. It's, it's, basically what's back there now is, what would you call that area? It's not, not lawn, it's just.
No, well, right now, it's kind of.
Post-construction mess?
Just post-construction, and we have planted some things there, you know, wetland plants, native planting to not only take advantage of the wet soil, but also to attract birds, you know, insects, enhance the neighborhood. But we aren't effectively touching anything anyway within a 15-foot setback all the way around, so, you know, it'll just be kind of, that's the low point, and there are nice well-in plantings there.
Okay. Would anybody in the audience like to speak to this application? Seeing none? Any motion to close?
A move.
Second, those in favor?
Okay.
Thank you.
Hearing closed.
Thank you.
We'll deliberate and maybe decide next week.
Thank you.
Is that going too fast for you, Jeremy?
So fast, good.
Item number four?
Actually, you guys switch back up to correct. Item number four, which is now, was item number three.
Amendment to landfilling and regressing application number 341, Scott Lesko, 16 West Elm Street, request to permit as-built conditions to remain on site relative to additional fill being placed on the western portion of the property, in contrast to previously approved landfilling and regressing application number 341. This includes an increase in height of a new stone wall along the westerly property boundary to match the new grades. The .34 acre subject property is located on the south side of West Elm Street, approximately 400 feet west of its intersection with Noreen Avenue, and is shown on assessors map number 21, as lot 171 in the R1 third zone.
Jeremy, what do we got?
You may recall in 2014, 2015, which is two years ago now, Mr. Lesko came before the Commission for a regrading application to regrade his yard. The Commission did approve that application with conditions. Within a year or two after that, the property was finished graded. It was then determined that the regrading that was done did not match what the Commission approved. So we've mentioned to Mr. Lesko that it doesn't match. You'll either have to amend the plans or return to the Commission to get what was done approved by the Commission.
Just to recall, my memory system went, excuse me, telephone. Was this the one we told them not to take trucks from McGowan Fieldside and go over the wall, and they did?
No, I think that might have been a different application, I believe.
That's the other one?
But we'll have to, I don't recall.
Okay. Thank you. Sir, can you please state your name for the record?
Oh, yes. My name is Craig Flaherty. I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of Connecticut. I'm a principal and senior engineer with the firm of Redness and Mead, a land use consulting company with offices in Stamford and Wilton. I am here, yes, sir?
Go ahead.
I'm here on behalf of the applicant and property owner, Scott Lesko, 16 West Elm Street. Just to confirm for the record that you do have the certificate of mailing.
Correct.
In your file indicating the notice went out to neighbors in accordance with requirements. And I think briefly, Scott would just like to make a statement about kind of how, how we got here, how he got here, and then I'll go through the details and the merits of the request. Thank you.
My name is Scott Lesko. I'm a resident of Darian for almost six years, but it's important for me to say to you that I'm not a contractor. I'm a person that looked for a home back in 2013 for over a year. As many of you may recall, inventory was quite slim at that particular time, and my realtor at the time convinced me to find a home in a great location, which I did, and to renovate it, make it into the home that was suitable for my family and I. Unfortunately, as renovations often do, it wasn't 100 percent perfect, and I inherited a few problems that were created by subcontractors that I hired. In the end, those problems are mine. I take full responsibility for them, and, but it's important for me to share to you this evening that I did not intentionally create these problems. It wasn't something that, that I did. I did not disregard the plans in any way, shape, or form. In fact, if you look across sort of the entire renovation that was done, I was actually complimented by many of the officials in town on the job that I did. Prior to closing on the home, I spent countless hours with Dave Keating from the Darian zoning department, making sure that I could make the home that I was going to purchase meet the needs of my family. After purchase, I spent many, many meetings with Dave Keating again prior to submitting the plans to go through to make sure that everything was done correctly. There were two changes that came up during construction that I reviewed with Dave Keating prior to implementing them in the field, and I just wanted to impress that these are not the actions of a person that does whatever they want, as you may hear this evening. Again, this is my home, and this is my community. That's not the person I am. Unfortunately, two of the three excavators that I hired during my project were not the best people. The first excavator had to be fired because he crossed the Parks and Recreation property after I told him numerous times and had the Darian Police Department show up at my door. The second excavator, when he started, the first thing I asked him to do, as many of you can appreciate when you have a large construction project going on, you're working full-time, I said, here's the site plan, just check the grades, and he came back and said everything was spot-on. Everything inside and outside of my house was done to the letter of the law, with the exception of the mistakes that we're here to discuss this evening. Over the course of two years, I had many meetings with the Darian zoning department to understand how to resolve this matter. I met with at least a half a dozen Connecticut licensed engineers to find out what was the best, the best plan to resolve this matter. I've met with additional excavators and landscapers to find the best way to resolve this matter. I also met with the neighbors that were affected by the mistakes that took place, all in the effort to try to find the best way to resolve this matter. One thing that was consistent from the messages that I've heard from just about everyone is that today that the area is very stable. Any changes to the area today would, would result in problems with runoff to the neighbors, and that's why we're here this evening. A couple of points I wanted to share with you before I wrap up. The materials on the, on the retaining wall on the westerly side of the, of the property on the approved plan were supposed to be made out of large loose rocks. That wall was about half-built when I received a call from my neighbors, Mr. and Mrs. Norelli, and they informed me that they didn't like the wall. I came over and had a meeting with them. They told me it looked like a jetty and it was unsafe. I went over to Paramount Stone Masonary Supply Company. I picked up a catalog. I handed it to Mr. and Mrs. Norelli, and I asked them to pick out the materials that they liked for the wall. The excavator had to rip out the wall that was just, that he had just built, remove all the materials that he had on site for the original wall, and build a new wall using the materials that Norelli's picked. This change cost me over $5,000 above and beyond what was originally specked in the contract with the excavator.
Can I stop you there one second? Did you ask the town for approval to do that change?
I spoke with the zoning department. I said because the wall was under three feet, that it didn't require an engineered plan.
Okay.
Is that true?
Jeremy?
That's true.
Again, this doesn't sound like an action. It just does whatever they want. This evening, you may see photos of water and dirt washing over the retaining wall on the westerly side of the property. I would just like to note that the landscaping contractor took down the silt fences that were up to install new evergreen trees that were going along the wall, and also to spread topsoil ahead of the sod installation that was supposed to take place that Monday morning. That evening, unfortunately, we had a flash thunderstorm that was unexpected. It did result in some water, as well as some of the loose topsoil washing over the top of the wall, so you're likely to see some pictures. I received a call from Mr. Norelli that this had happened. I went straight over the next day and cleaned everything off his property. Since the installation of the landscaping and the grass, there has not been any water or dirt that has washed over that wall in almost two years. 2008 was one of the wettest years on record, and still, nothing has washed over that wall, and the wall has not moved since it's been installed.
How tall is the wall?
Sorry?
How tall is the wall?
It's got some specs on it.
Thank you.
There was, there was a field stone wall that was installed around a large oak tree on the westerly side of the property at the recommendation of landscape contractor. For those of you that may have walked the property, you'll notice there was an existing maple tree, and there's a very large oak tree. Unfortunately, the maple tree sits right here. Over the course of construction, this continued to be an erosion problem. It kept washing out and washing out and washing out. At the advice of the, of the landscaper, he said, you're going to have an ongoing issue here unless you do something, and so we installed the wall.
If it was designed as approved, it wouldn't have happened, so you wouldn't have had to build the wall around it, correct?
No, that's, I mean, I'm not an expert, sir, but I'm just telling you that if you saw the heights of the tree.
Please, thank you.
You can see there's a three-foot difference, and there's only a couple of feet difference between the two trees. Hopefully, you observed this when you, when you walked the property ahead of today's meeting. Again, that, that wall was under three feet. In summary, as I mentioned, I'm a resident, not a contractor. I'm sorry for the extra burden on the town services that this problem has caused. Although I did not create these problems, I take full responsibility for them. I'm willing to be flexible with, with a solution that works for all parties involved, but of course, it does not create a lifetime of washout erosion to the neighbor's property. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. You're welcome. Just, just for, to jump a comment, a lot of the contractors working in town are very experienced, so the fact that you're a resident, not a contractor, really doesn't matter. I'd rather have a contractor up here doing it, that's go ten houses in town.
I couldn't hear anything you were saying, I'm sorry.
Okay.
What was that?
It doesn't matter.
I can see whatever I want to say, Liz. Calm down.
But it's not appropriate.
John, would you take it over?
All right. I missed the opening, but I'm very familiar with this application.
Craig was going to take over.
So I haven't done my presentation yet, so I figured it was mine. So I'd love to you to, I did catch some of it, and I do want to say we are here because the plan was not followed. We are here after many months of trying to rectify this with the property owner. We are here because of delays caused by the property owner. I realize, sir, you were not part of the original plan, and you're here to clean things up, so if you could help us understand the new plan or the existing as-built and how it fits the regulations, what impacts it might have on the property owners, and just get us focused on how to remedy this. That would be great.
Hopefully, we will leave with a remedy. I should, I think it's worth stating that I am, am not here because Mr. Lesko hired me and said, I want to keep my wall, you know, let's file a modification so I can keep it. I'm here because Mr. Lesko asked me for my advice, and as I looked into the facts and circumstances and details of what is built, it was my advice to ask for the modification because I do feel it complies with the relevant sections of the earthfilling and regressing application. So to orient you, well, this is upside down, that's a good start.
Depends on which way you're looking at.
It's a tough, it's a tough exhibit, but to orient you, this is Mr. Lesko's residence, so West Elm Street is to the north, McGowan Field Park and Rec Properties to the south. So we have 16, 18 West Elm, the downhill property owner, the Norellis, and this is an uphill property owner here. So this gives you a look at what the backyard looks like today. Shed, shed, the oak tree, the oak tree. And then this is a look along the property boundary of the monument block wall, about where the property boundary is, the neighbor's backyard, the landscaping that Mr. Lesko has installed on the property boundary. So the wall's about 36 inches tall, the, the existing wall. So the first thing I looked at was I overlaid the approved design plan with the William Seymour as-built plan. So I know this is a lot of squiggly lines, but as we orient you to it, I'm going to walk you through what it is. So the approved design plan has the contours highlighted in green, and the as-built plan has the contours highlighted in blue. I then went through those two plans and compared them. Everywhere there is a blue dot, the proposed grade precisely matches the existing grade, spot-on. So in this predominant area of the backyard, 90 percent plus of the backyard, they graded it within plus or minus six inches of the approved plan. The area where it departs, departs from that tolerance is along the western property line, and so I put an open red circle. You have all these exhibits, by the way. Everything you're looking at here is in your packet. I put an open red circle indicating the departure. I put an open red circle indicating the departure from the design plan to the as-built. So you have a line here that's about a foot higher, and a line here that's about two feet higher.
Can I just stop there?
Yes, sir.
So we make sure everybody understands.
Yeah.
Go.
When you say a foot higher, you're saying that the as-built is higher, that today's contour is a foot higher than what was-
Approved.
Approved, okay.
And that was approved in what year, Craig?
2015, I believe, February 2015. Or that's when the original plan was done.
So Craig, can you point to where, I'm reading what you're talking about here in my hand, where is the wall 24 feet taller than anticipated?
Inches, inches.
I'm sorry, inches, not feet.
That'd be your-
Never would it be.
I don't think we'd be here, asking for a modification in that case, but-
Inches, sorry, inches.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, that's what I'm gonna do next.
Okay.
And I'm gonna do that with this exhibit. So there's two pages here. I called William Seymour, the project surveyor, and I said, "Do you have any shots on the top of the wall?" Because there weren't any on the as-built. And he sent over the CAD file, there are three shots that they took on the top of the wall, I have those circled in red. So this is the as-built survey detail, elevation 109, elevation 109.9, elevation 110.7. When you look at the design plan, so the bottom image here, next page, is a picture, a snip of the design plan, which is also over here, which shows the proposed wall. It says, "Top of wall 109," "Top of wall 109," and this particular exhibit doesn't indicate the type of wall, it simply says retaining wall. And so I superimposed those three as-built elevations from the William Seymour survey onto the proposed design plan, so we can see, design elevation 109, top of wall 109, design elevation 109 all the way along, but here, top of wall 109.9, so it starts to rise up, top of wall 110.7, so it starts to rise up. Ultimately, the wall ends up extending to about here, the one along the property boundary, and then there's a tree well around the oak, which is partly because of the additional fill, but it's partly because even the design plan had fill in this area, and the landscaper said, "We shouldn't fill in that root zone as much, let's put the tree well in." So, it makes sense what the contractor did, he probably had 109 here, and said, "Well, I'm three feet above the grade at the property boundary, I'm gonna run this wall parallel with the grade on the low side." So it stays a consistent 36 inches all the way along, those blocks run in rows, so as you look at it from the neighbor's property, it's a consistent 36 inches. Problem is, the neighbor's property slopes up slightly from McGowan Field to the back of the house. So the grade here, where the wall ends, in the neighbor's property, is two feet higher than the grade here. So although this wall looks level, it runs parallel, but it ends up rising that two feet over that 80-foot distance. And, you know, that's where the error was made. So, I think it's understandable that this happened, it's unfortunate that this happened.
So it's just around the oak, the oak thing, that it's a little, that it's the two feet higher than as-
Basically, you know, for the first, I would say, the first 40%, I would say, plus or minus, is within zero to six inches of the design plan, and then it kind of slopes up from there.
To about 100.
So by the time it gets to the oak tree, it's 24 inches higher than the design plan.
And I'm understanding, Craig, that that raw, the wall, you've seen the picture on the top, wasn't in the approved plan?
That's correct.
But it was done to preserve the tree.
That's correct.
And what's the height, total height? So you said 24 inches higher than the approved plan, but what's the-
Total height's 36 inches, about, plus or minus, consistent all the way along the property boundary.
And how, the property, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the property line, the wall is smack up to the property line, or you're-
There's actually a little more distance. I just drew that line in Photoshop, just to provide it.
That's why I was-
I would call that a schematic representation of the property boundary. The as-built survey is the actual representation, and it's about a foot. Here, it's right at the wall, looks like, because there's a little kink over. Here, it's six or 12 inches away.
And that says, the plan from 2015 was to be located there?
Yeah, you can see, this is the plan, and this is the as-built.
My question is, is it located exactly where it was approved by the commission, pretty much?
Plus or minus a foot?
Okay.
It's on the property.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yes, sir.
I want to ask you to speculate, or maybe, I'll ask both you and Jeremy to speculate. If the original application had been filed using the as-built, today's as-built figures, would, for Jeremy, would it be approved, would it have been approved? For you, would you have opined that it was drainage environmentally, structurally, whatever, sound?
I will get to that, but I'll let Jeremy answer your question first.
I think, the commission, you're right, Jim, the commission would have looked at a number of factors. Is the proposed plan changing traditional water flows? If it is, how is it addressing stormwater in the area on adjacent properties? Is it stable? Is it gonna be too steep or too flat? Is it gonna cause problems matching up with adjacent properties? Those are the issues the commission likely would have discussed and asked questions about, like they did with the prior application. How will this affect the neighbors? Whether it's McGowan, or Mr. Norelli, or the neighbor on the other side, the changing grade could affect water flows. So those would have been the issues the commission would have asked relative to this plan.
And whether or not they've hit our regulations.
And Section 850, which I emailed to the commission-
I'll get it.
-which lists the various criteria.
So, obviously, I have a horse in this game, right? But a three-foot retaining wall on a property boundary is not an unreasonable thing to build. In fact, I'll point out that anyone can build a freestanding three-foot stone wall on their property boundary, or make it of any material they want, without a zoning permit and without a building permit. Actually, the only thing that creates the need for your review is the fill behind it, right? It's the change in grade that you evaluate effectively, not the wall. People can put fences on their property boundary, et cetera, et cetera. So, what I did in the application is I took Section 853 and Section 854, which are the general requirements for an earth regressing and refilling applications, and the limitations and environmental impact statement that's necessary, and I provided my commentary as to how we meet each one. So, from the drainage perspective, going back to here, we're in a neighborhood that from Narroton Avenue goes downhill to Edgerton, right? So basically, all the properties, higher, lower, and lower, and lower, and lower, right? Water flowed this way.
North to south, basically?
East to west, and then a little bit, and a little bit north to south into McGowan. Yep, exactly. So, there were no stormwater controls on this property prior to the construction. The approved plan required collecting the roof leaders and piping them to an infiltration system in the backyard, to a level spreader at the rear property boundary. That was done, that was signed off on by Doug DeVesta. The plan also modified the grading, so instead of it directly flowing from east to west, it pushed the grade more towards McGowan Field. I can unequivocally say that there is less, because of these improvements, because of the grading and the addition of the storm system that wasn't there before, there is less water getting to 18 West Elm than there was prior to construction, period. So-
Let me, if I can interrupt you again, on that precise point.
Yes.
Is there less water flowing to 18 than there would have been if, had the grading been done in accordance with the original application?
I would say there's a little more water flowing to the property based on the original plan, but less water than the pre-existing grades. And it really has to do with this being slightly canted in that direction, right? The pre-existing grades were sloped directly this way. The proposed grade said directly that way, and the result was mostly this way, right? But a little bit that way.
Correct me if I'm wrong, this was something that we had discussed since I was on the board, because there was an issue with the parking lot?
No, it's a different property.
There's a lot of grades. Okay, good.
Yeah, there's a number eight, I think, up the street. We don't wanna talk about that right now.
Thank you, I didn't want to mistake that I was still talking about that from baseball days. Right, okay.
And that has not been as successful as, on any regard.
That's still a problem.
Landscaping, stormwater, raining. So, I think it's worth going through-
Jim, did you, did you get that?
Yeah.
So, okay, so the conclusion is, better than as was?
Yes.
But not quite as good as originally designed and approved?
Which is why we would need a modification to approve the as-built condition.
Is there, is there anything you can do with drainage? I mean, to mitigate any increase in flow? What are we talking about?
Yeah, I think, well, again, there's a decrease in flow, period.
So does it need it?
I think, when I looked at options, and I talked to Scott, like, "Oh, can we terrace the wall? Can we take two or three blocks off and move it over?" And everything involves, like, going out there with a backhoe and chopples-
Yeah, I get it, I get it.
...and digging everything up again, and et cetera, et cetera.
Giving like a curtain drain to the back?
Yeah, so we talked about, you know, can we, we'll put, we'll bury a crushed stone perforated pipe at the top of the wall, so if there's anything that happens to be coming down, we'll catch that, but then we have a pipe we have to get rid of at the end, you know, and right now, I was out there after a rain event, I didn't see, like, running water onto McGowan Field like I do, so it's like working, you know? And I think the fact that we've lived through a year with 62 inches of rain, and it looks pretty good, you know, I wouldn't want to go out there and disturb it again, and then end up with this pipe discharge that I have to take care of.
We didn't have a discharge from this property during this major rain, is correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so, I mean, this has been the worst.
I guess that's what I, by observational data, seems to be working.
Right, and if there was, this has been the worst.
Yeah, we would have, this would have pushed us to see a problem that would perpetuate or get worse over time. So, 853A, ground stability, so no application shall be approved until the commission shall be satisfied that proper provisions shall be made to control. A, ground stability, including the prevention of soil erosion and earth slides, I think it's clear from the pictures and the condition of the site, that the ground is stable. Stormwater runoff, including protection of watercourses, streams, ponds, and wetlands. B, the stormwater system was installed, and we've just talked about how we meet the letter and intent of the regs, because it's better than it was before. C, pollution, siltation, stream erosion, again, the ground is fully stabilized and well-planted, flying dust and erosion by wind, again, the ground is fully stabilized and well-planted. And it's worth saying that during construction, the same amount of area would have been disturbed, right? We didn't disturb any additional area to go to this wall, so it's like the same even during the temporary condition.
Maybe you're on the trail a little more, though.
I get, well, you look at the, you look at the-
I guess I'm pointing out that-
There are, there are design grades in that area, right? There's proposed contours showing fill-
That would be the most dramatic incremental increase in disturbance in that area.
But wasn't, wasn't there less fill, though?
There was less fill right around the tree, but probably more fill right here, at the top of the tree wall.
Right, it would have sloped down, and then would have suffocated the roots of the tree, so instead they just went like that.
Exactly. So, 853E, conservation and fertility of the existing topsoil, again, the ground is stabilized and well-planted. 853F, preservation of significant trees, vegetation, and other natural resources, the maple and the oak are preserved. There was a small birch in the backyard that was removed, which was initially should be saved on the approved application. G is your discretion, such other factors as may relate to the healthful, safe, and harmonious development of the town, I'll leave that for you to consider. 854, limitations and environmental impact statement, in addition to the findings required above, and by Section 1000, excavation fill or grading shall not. A, extend within 50 feet of a wetland watercourse, stream, pond, river, tidal flow, that's not applicable. B, extend within 15 feet of the boundaries of the premises, unless it can be shown to have no negative impact on the adjacent properties, and is specifically authorized by the planning and zoning commission. So that's why we're here. This is one, this is the main thing that gives you the teeth in your regs, and why applications end up before you for excavation and fill. But we would suggest that there is no offsite impact of that condition. It's static and stable and attractive. Beauty is in the eye of the holder. 854C, establish lateral support or other finished slopes in excess of one foot of vertical rise in elevation per each two feet of horizontal distance, except where firm bedrock is permitted, the grade complies with this requirement, it's less than two-on-one. D, be finished with less than six inches of arable topsoil, well-planted and stabilized over the entire disturbed areas, the finish complies with this requirement. 854E, permit loose debris such as rock, stumps, brush, junk, or other foreign material to remain exposed on the finished surface of the ground, there is no loose debris. 854F, result in excessive flying dust, noise hazard to children or pedestrians, or danger to adjacent properties or passing vehicles. I would opine that there is no dust, noise, or hazard, or danger. 854G, result in unreasonable disturbance to the safety, health, and tranquility of the general neighborhood, I would suggest that there's no unreasonable disturbance. Again, we're not here permitting the wall, right? We're here permitting the fill. 854H, inflict any substantial detriment on the natural environment or the irreplaceable natural resource of its environments as judged by your commission. I will allow you to judge so, but I don't see a detriment to natural environment. 854I, cause any negative effects on stormwater drainage, especially as it may impact adjacent properties, and as I pointed out, the stormwater system was installed as approved, and it has improved conditions over the pre-existing conditions. So that is, I think, in effect, our presentation, you know, yes, sir.
Can I ask you a question? If we were to go back to the original plan?
Yeah.
How disruptive, I mean, talk about the work that would be required to do that.
The funny, the weird thing is how the wall might, might look at the, at the end of the day, but I'll talk about the work that would be necessary. There were a few pictures submitted by email by the neighbor, one of which is kind of helpful, because it shows you a better picture of the wall. You know, those courses run parallel to the ground, right? So, we can leave this section, so then we start taking off, you know, one course starting here, start taking off two courses starting here, we start taking off three courses starting there, and then we're plus or minus six inches from the approved plan, and you have a wall that from that side will appear to kind of artificially step down, because it's gonna form this thin triangle. But, you know, from, from a significant portion of this area, we would have to remove the installed arboritee, and temporarily stage it, and take care of it. We're going to have to, because there's not enough room to get around the house, we'll have to negotiate with Park and Rec again to gain permission through their property, which they did grant to Mr. Lesko after the original contractor did so without asking permission. So we'd have to get permission to go through Park and Rec again to get a backhoe in, to be able to dig out, you know, that, that zero to 24 inches of material in this area, and dig out the wall. So now you're, you're disturbing whatever path the backhoe's walking on, or maybe you protect it with boards or planks, but you're gonna disturb, you know, an area that looks like that, which will go down to dirt again. You'll get the grades closer to the original plan.
Can you give us a sense of the number of yards that would have to be removed?
Sorry, I'm calling in too- Yeah, yeah, no, I gotta do calculations on the fly here, but it's 10 by 40, 400, one, 15 to 20 cubic yards, so a couple dump trucks.
And Craig, for my amateur eye, where would you be taking earth out from?
So, basically where these red circles are, right?
So it would just be scooping earth out of that area?
Yeah, well, moving the plants, scooping earth out of that area, adjusting the wall, putting topsoil back, putting the plants back in. And the question is-
And we're talking about a foot to a foot and a half of earth?
Yes, a total, and a max is a two-
Two feet at the-
But I think if we were here, plus or minus six inches, we wouldn't be here, right? So, you know.
And then, would that be usable? Would kids be able to run on it, or would it be a fall-off?
It creates more of a fall-off in the backyard to have the wall over there. You know, if you look at the detail of the design plan, and this speaks a little bit to Mr. Rand's questions, you know, I don't think the focus of, you know, the additions and the stormwater and the grading was really like, exactly how tall is this wall supposed to be? It's supposed to be parallel to the ground, it's supposed to be parallel to sea level, like, I don't think that the engineer was paying a lot of attention here, which is probably why we're in this situation anyway, but it's not like this was the focus of the application, right? The focus of the application was up here. And, so I don't believe it would have been a significant- And so, I don't believe it would have been a significant issue if the, the design plan looked like the as-built plan. But the question I keep going back to is, you'll look, I understand, you don't want to set a precedent, you don't want to give people the idea that they can kind of build off plan and come in and get reapproved, and there's just somewhat of a desire to be maybe at least mildly punitive to say, look, no, we're just going to say no, go back. But I look at the regs, right? I look at, like, is it, would it be better if we did all that work? I don't, I don't think so. I think it's perfectly fine the way it is.
I guess, I guess the question that comes to us is who benefits from that?
Let Jim ask a question.
But you, you mentioned it a moment ago in passing that, that were you to lower the wall and stages or whatever, that the result would be an increase in fall-off?
Yes.
Now, does that mean that any, that the likelihood of surface water ending up on the adjacent property would increase?
Yeah, we're talking, we're talking very small amounts, but yes, there would be an incremental increase of runoff because you're, you're sloping it a little more steeply towards the property owner to not have the wall in these locations. It's incremental, I mean, it's, it's not really measurable.
The wall got extended how many feet, you think? Is it like four feet?
Horizontally?
垂直.
Yeah, so.
If you pick up the one below you.
That much. This one's to scale. This is 20 scale.
Right, we use some of it.
I'm going to say that's an inch, so that's about 20 feet.
So, we're talking about 20, the wall was extended by 20 feet closer to the tree.
Yes. And then the tree wall was wrapped around the tree.
Correct, it was wrapped around the tree.
So, total with the wraparound is?
Maybe 40 feet, yeah.
Okay. You want to take it? Let me take it over here. Are you done?
He's getting a little eager, isn't he? He did a great job before he had it.
Are you finished?
I am done.
I have a state of suspicion, Mr. Keating would like to speak.
Dave Keating, I'm the zoning enforcement officer. I didn't come with a presentation, I came in case you had any questions for me.
I guess, Dave, talk about the experience trying to get down to the bottom of this. I mean, I walked in during the presentation, but I'm privy to some of the frustrations that you guys ran into and delays, but maybe in a, in a very brief manner, if you could just talk about the timeline that got us here.
And with that said, Mr. Lesko, in his presentation, said a lot of things that was approved by the zoning, and he spoke to the zoning officer, I'm assuming that was you most of the time?
Yes, we, we had reviewed the application ahead of time, we reviewed the, I reviewed the plans for the addition to the house. Those things were accurate, and during the construction, I'm sorry, during the filling and regressing in the backyard and the construction of the wall, the neighbor had contacted me, was very concerned about the sta, stability of the wall and what happens if it fails and who's responsible, and thought that it was, the neighbor thought that the wall was too high and that the filling and regressing was too high. And when I looked at it, I had a similar concern and expressed that to Mr. Lesko, and he said, well, he's counting on his contractor, he's given the plans to the contractor, and that he was counting on the contractor to do it correctly. And as the wall continued to be built and the fill continued to go in, I warned Mr. Lesko that I thought it still looked too high and that the as-built survey would be critical to determine whether it was in compliance with the approved plan. And when that finally, that as-built survey finally came in, and I compared the approved plan to the as-built version with the contour lines, I could see clearly that it was too high, particularly along the westerly property line. And if the center of the lot is off by six inches or even a foot, and it's great and it doesn't impact the neighbors, then I have some discretion and I can exercise that discretion and say that's fine. But particularly the area within 15 feet of a neighboring property owner and right up against the property line to be off by a foot to two feet is a problem. And so, I felt I certainly couldn't approve this plan, or, I'm sorry, I couldn't, certainly couldn't approve the as-built as being in accordance with what the commission had approved. And the planning and zoning commission's resolution was very clear, no certificate of occupancy until everything was done per the approved plan. And so, we discussed various options about modifying the site or coming back to the commission with a, a new application or making some modifications to the site and some minor changes that we could bring to the commission on an administrative basis. And the result was this application for a revised permit or for a new permit.
What's the date of the as-built? Is this the as-built here? I'm staring. As-built, W, record, June 26th, June 2017? Is that right?
Sounds about right.
So, why does it take two years to get here? That's what I understand.
Because he didn't agree that it was not correct. He kept arguing with me that he thought it was still okay because his contractor has done it, his contractor.
Well, what I understand is there's no, is there a certificate of occupancy on the property?
No, there's none.
Okay, so, it's not like it was a deadline on ours, it's just now he would like to get the C, the CO correct, so that's why he's back here now, two years later, right?
Can't get a mortgage on a CEO.
Ultimately, though.
We didn't need one.
You can. You don't need one, no, that one.
Ultimately, can he not occupy the house after a period of time?
Well, certainly, we've mentioned that to Mr. Lesko. Dave and I met with Mr. Lesko on a number of occasions to discuss the fact that we can't issue the CO because the planning and zoning commission was clear in its resolution that the as-built has to come in and match what was proposed, and we can't issue the CO until then. So, the CO is in the building department, the building official has said the house is fine, so the building official has said, from his standpoint, the house is fine, but we, Dave, as the zoning officer, cannot sign it because the grading is not correct.
Okay, yeah.
My question, no.
What's your question?
You're allowed to live in the house.
You're allowed to live in the house.
If you can live in a house without a CO, you can't, you can't get a mortgage.
Or other things, there's none, yeah.
It's not the passage of time cure that? I mean, if you.
There are buildings in New York City that don't have COs, seriously.
Jeremy, can you answer?
I don't think the passage of time.
But he can live in the house. Jeremy's question.
Not as far as I'm concerned.
It's not, it doesn't matter.
The certificate of occupancy is what allows somebody to utilize it.
Okay, now, I meant to ask this question to, I think, Mr. Flaherty, but I can ask it to you. From the downside neighbor's eye, now, I think from the picture that was depicted, we emailed, the wall looks level from the lower side neighbor. So, if the wall did get lowered by two feet, one foot to two foot on the side, is the wall going to look crooked or look slanted?
Well, it would look a different height in different parts of the backyard, because the grade of the backyard of the neighbor goes downhill as it goes away from West Elm Street toward the town property in the back. And so, the wall would be flat and even at 109, and it would only be roughly a foot tall close to the tree and roughly two feet tall as it goes back toward the backyard.
Right, so it's one of the ones that we've seen that goes, gets built into the side of the hill, pretty much?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission? No?
You'd asked about the, the time delay between the time of the as-built, and I started answering, at first, Mr.
I'm sorry.
Lesko did not agree that there was a difference, and when I could finally point that out to him on the map and graphically show it to him, then it was, there were long discussions about, well, what do we do from here and what options are there? And then it was, we lost the winter, we lost the season to do the site work, and then so, then it was winter, and then it was next, the following spring, and discussions resumed and so forth. So, it wasn't just that he disagreed, that was the first stage, and then it continued beyond that.
Some more travel claims and that sort of thing as well. Okay.
Okay.
Do you have any other color you want to add?
Nope.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, just so you, the commission knows, I was privy to a lot of the emails that went back and forth between staff and Mr. Lesko and Mr. Norelli, so.
So, that's going to be between 17, 2017, 2019?
Correct.
Okay.
I probably wasn't brought up to speed immediately, but, you know, as things kind of escalated, I was brought up to speed. And, you know, at one point offered a meeting that was foregone, and then last minute was asked to attend the meeting, and it was, in my mind, too late. So, but staff handled it appropriately, and that's why we find ourselves here where we are. So, why do you open?
But everybody.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Greg. So, is the wall stable? Because that was the impetus behind the beginning of this conversation.
I, I think it looks great. It's, it doesn't require structural review, it doesn't require a building permit because it is 36 inches or shorter.
Okay.
But it looks, you know, it's great.
And there's no runoff that goes?
You know, again, I think there's a, an incremental amount that might, you know, most rainfalls are going to soak into that lawn, right? But, you know, sometimes your lawn gets so saturated, right, that there's a little runoff from it. So, you know, there may be a little bit of washover, but it's, I don't think it's significant.
For the record, I was out there today, looked at it, the wall looked dry as a bone on the top of it, but today was a hot summer day. Would anybody in the audience like to speak to this application?
Do you want to go up there?
Yes, please. And Jeremy, for the record, Dave, I didn't bring the email today that you sent us with the pictures and whatnot.
Yes, Mr. Norelli, who's coming to the podium right now, sent an email dated June 2nd, which was this past Sunday, 4:26 PM. You have that in your packets, along with a number of helpful photos showing work during construction. So, his email, the commission members have that, and very helpful showing you some of the past information, and I think there's even a picture of the wall in its current condition, so you get a flavor for what, what's been going on over the past year-plus. That, that email, Mr. Flaherty also has Mr. Norelli's email.
So, we're up to speed on?
Yeah, I mean, it's all on the email here.
Can you say your name for the record?
Oh, Tom Norelli, 18 West Elm Street, lived there with my wife Sandy.
Could you spell your last name, please?
Norelli, N-O-R-E-L-L-I.
Thank you very much.
So, sir, what do you think?
Well, I'm pretty disappointed with, with the whole matter, how it happened, because the original meeting minutes said you're going to have a wall about approximately two feet. You know, now we have a three-foot wall, and then I thought, you know, a two-foot wall, I'd be, you know, shooting the site over that and it'd be a yard right there, but there's, there's an incline, so we got about a five or six-foot-high yard against a three-foot Lego wall, basically. It's, it's not engineered, it's, there's no footing, there's no foundation. That was my main concern from the very beginning, from the day he broke ground, and we voiced that to him as soon as, you know, he broke ground. He had originally started just piling boulders that, you know, looked like a jetty, and that's where, you know, we talked to him about it, we don't, you know, that just looks horrible. And it wouldn't stop the, you know, the, the dirt from flowing in between the, the rocks.
Now, when I, the pictures that you sent, and you can't see today, there's a humongous boulder in it.
Yeah, that's what, they were, he was stacking those, and that was going to be the retaining wall.
So, is that still, to your knowledge, in the ground, and they, they kept it there? So, that's still stabilized?
I'm not sure. I know that they, they trucked in a lot of stuff for that backyard, through the back, because we were shocked that they were going through the back of the park, because we asked to do something and it was turned down a long time ago, and they just did it.
So, I, I understand that you're frustrated because it's been a long time that you've been dealing with this construction, so, but I have the advantage of knowing absolutely nothing, so I get to make decisions based on just what is being presented by the applicant and his staff and our staff, which is sometimes helpful, because we're not, I probably don't have to deal with the frustrations at all.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, my question for you is what, what would you like to see, if anything, different than what you have as built?
We talked to him a year ago, we would like to see him, you know, build to the plan.
So, you would like to see, so, you're standing up here saying you would like to see the, the grading removed from the west side?
And we'd like to see less yard around that big tree, and, you know, all the rest that's causing around, you know, these trees, two other big trees in the back corner of the property that got filled in are dead now, just standing there from the fill.
Well, that, yeah, that's what would have happened to the other tree, I guess. But, um, did you see this, the, that one? So, it would just be taking all those red, you see the red numbers up on the top?
Down.
That's the, that's the section that would be removing land.
And less yard and less, you know, stress on that wall.
Well, the wall could be three feet, if I write. So, you don't need the wall to, do, do you want the wall to step down?
But was the, the approved plan three feet?
But the wall doesn't have to be approved by us, am I correct? Because he could take the fill out and keep a three-foot wall.
Your, your, the, the wall was approved at three feet, going down to one foot is, is the understanding of the old plan. The, the question that I proposed to the engineer, proposed to you, because it's more visible to you, if you look at the picture on the bottom that's up there, and you look at the picture that you submitted, right, now the wall from your house, to me, looks level. So, you would rather see a wall that slopes down.
I'm fine with that.
Versus a wall that's level.
But what Jennifer's saying, Steve, is that, that anybody can build a three-foot wall without approval from planning and zoning. So, the only thing that needed approval was the grade, not the wall.
The grade against the wall.
Yeah, but you could take out the grading, but the wall stays the same.
Yeah, that's fine, but the grade is an awful lot of yard sitting above that wall. And the wall, by the way, isn't perfect right now, it's bulging about an inch out in the middle, and, and it's buckling, so.
But it's not touching your property?
No, no.
And you don't have water runoff in that part of the property?
There's not a whole lot of runoff.
And the disruption that would cause you, if we were to, if we were to require remedy that wouldn't disturb you?
No problem with that. And, and, yeah, it shouldn't have gotten to this, because we brought this up as it was built.
I, I feel your pain there, and so does our staff.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I understand your frustrations.
Anything else?
I think that's about it.
It's fine.
That's about it, I just.
Could I, yes? Are there any other impacts other than, on, on your property, other than the height of the wall?
Well, I don't, I don't think so. A little bit of water far down in the back, but that, I don't see that all the time.
Did you say far down, closer to McGowan?
Yeah.
Okay. But that was built, that was built according to the plan?
I believe so.
Okay.
But then also on the stairs.
Can she come up?
Of course she can.
Hello, I'm Sandy Norelli, 18 West Elm Street. I have been home countless times where the water has, where rain has come down at the end of our deck or our patio, and it comes straight down the stairs. It will be like a river between those points. It seems like where the stone wall around the tree, right where the arboridee are, that is a lower point, and it comes right down those stairways.
So, that would be on this end of the stone?
Right on the upper part?
That would be like right over here.
Right.
So, towards the road down the street, West Elm.
Yeah, or show them the plan like here.
So, so.
See where the tree?
I, I haven't been able to see this from right.
Craig, try showing.
Right here, this point right here, this blue point is right where the water comes, right at our patio, right down our stairs to our driveway. Oh, yeah, but we have a drain in our, in our driveway, and it goes right into the drain in the driveway.
Is that the picture that you submitted? That's your driveway drain?
No, that's the back drain, all the way back.
There's a cistern, and it overflows the cistern, then it comes up through that bubbler, and then out the back.
The bubbler is by the back?
All the way back.
By McGowan.
By McGowan.
Okay.
So, the blue point, that's what you're talking about? The blue point right on?
This blue point is right where the water comes into our yard and goes right down our patio onto the stairs to our garage, to our driveway.
You hold that thought for a second.
Sure. Sure.
Craig, you mentioned those blue parts. I forget what those blue dots meant.
Spot on.
Exact spot on.
That's right.
They're spot on.
Spot on.
They're spot on.
They're spot on with the original plan?
They're agile. Yeah. So, what's going to happen whether it was built this way or otherwise?
So, that, those blue points, if they're correct?
There's nothing going to change that.
They're built, they're built as?
As per the original plan.
From two thousand fifteen.
Plus or minus six inches.
Yeah.
Well, blue points are right on.
Exactly.
Well, I don't know if maybe the stairway, maybe the wall here does something. I don't know.
It's new. It didn't happen before.
We never had water running down the stairs to our driveway.
Okay. Craig, can you try to answer that for us? Can I wire that mic?
If they're done with their testimony, I would be happy to provide some answers.
Anything else we should do?
Could you provide some color?
Come on, Jen. You can see the wall.
Yeah, I can see it. My name's Jennifer Lynch. I'm the owner of Twenty West Elm, Mrs. Norelli's.
So, that would be so?
Further down the street.
Further down, west.
Further down, correct.
Close to Edgerton.
My kitchen and my deck overlooks the Norelli's yard, which has direct view of this wall, which I stare at every day, being mom of two kids. I'm at my kitchen a lot. So, the wall is wet constantly. So, my concern is that, at least for them, is that the water seeps through this block wall. I'm not an engineer, but I'm going to guess eventually that's going to buckle. So, I guess that's the concern I have at least, you know. So, the integrity of the wall over time. Seems to be buckling as it is now. It definitely has changed over the last two years. It seems to be buckling. I guess I don't know which point it is, but...
Craig, your picture there on the bottom, do you know where that's from?
It looks like, from my house, you can tell that it's buckling here. It doesn't look straight.
Towards the back.
It looks like that's exactly where the water comes through the wall every day. It's soaking wet. To me, once the sun comes up, it dries, but every day it's wet. And not from a sprinkler. It comes, it seeps through the wall.
That's at the back of the property, it looks like?
It's, so it's here. So, right about here, it seeps through, and this, this front of the, the front of the wall is wet.
Were you showing us, so that was approved to be the height of the wall, so?
Well, the yard's really high. I mean, compared to the wall, it's like night and day. I mean, I can't imagine that over time, that wall is going to hold that amount of fill.
Got it.
I mean, and like again, I'm not an engineer, but to, I mean...
That's what he's here for.
It's pretty high. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
One last comment. My name is Colin Sealy. My wife and I live across the street at nineteen West Elm Street. And I simply want to say that we're in support of the Norelli's position because, you know, we've seen, you know, some of the things that they've gone through with this and heard a lot of, you know, the angst around it. We don't look at it every day, so I don't see the runoff and things like that. But we did an addition ten years ago, and we had to get approval. We had to go through Dave Keating and the whole thing. And I wanted to make my garage a little bigger, and I wanted to make my living room a little bigger, but we couldn't do it. I mean, that was, you know, those are the rules. So, it just seems like, out of principle, it's kind of tough to say that this is okay. So, I just hope you consider that.
Thank you. Craig?
Yes, sir.
Could you comment on some of the comments that were commented? One's the integrity of wall over time.
Yeah, I'll talk about the wall, and I'll talk about the grade. So, I think it's important to point out for the neighbors and for you, again, where I started my testimony, which is that ninety percent of backyard, that plane that the backyard is at, which appears elevated from the neighbor's yard, is as approved. So, nothing here is going to change the feeling that the yard is five or six feet up in the air from the Norelli's yard. As we pointed out, effectively grades were not changed north of that, around where the maple tree is, maple tree's there. So, there's nothing that we could do with a remedy for this that would change the condition that they're noting at that location. So, reversal lock, lock walls, or these modular block walls actually have an advantage because of the joints between the blocks. They're made to be slightly flexible and not rigid, and they're made to allow water to flow through all of those joints. With a more typical wall construction, like a stone masonry, where you're mortaring all the joints, you kind of create a dam where you're holding groundwater behind it. And now, the wall has to be designed to hold back the force of the water like a dam. And so, it's actually, once you get to a concrete wall or a stone masonry wall, it has to be beefier to hold back the effects of the groundwater. What you end up doing is you put stone behind it and a weep hole at the bottom. So, if this was a stone wall, you'd have, you'd have weep holes at the bottom, right? But this one does weep through all those joints. That's how it's designed. So, it's not indicative...
So, you're saying what the neighbors are seeing water flowing through is actually supposed to happen?
Totally, totally normal for a modular block wall, and it does not speak to the stability or durability of the wall. How about these little buckles that they claim? Did you observe any of them? I have not, you know, I didn't see the wall go in, right? I have only been to the property twice to make observations. I did not observe anything that looked like movement to me, but granted, I had very pointed spot checks.
When was that picture taken?
Late last summer, I think, these two.
Okay. Because when I was there today, it did look like one of the top pieces of there slid a little.
Well, yeah, I mean, the top's almost just laid there. So, if you walk along it, you might move one of those bricks.
Okay. Because what I'm thinking is, is we take a string from one end to the other and see if it's bowed.
I mean, there's no telling that that occurred post-installation, right? It could be that your eye was off when you stacked up the blocks, right?
Correct, it might have done it wrong.
You basically have to, and we get involved in this, people that are worried about retaining walls moving, and we, you know, survey it to an eighth of an inch, and then we come back six months later and survey it to the eighth of an inch again and make sure it's not moving. That would be really the only way to tell if there's movement to the wall.
That's what I'm thinking.
You know, if a condition of approval was, we have to come back in six or twelve months or with shots over time, I suppose we'd consider that.
Because the as-built is dated from two thousand seventeen, and you guys didn't do it. Seymour didn't, right?
That's correct.
So, if you did another quote-unquote as-built as of two thousand nineteen, we could see if the wall moved at all.
Well, they, I think they shot, they shot the top back. That's not, that's not going to work as a baseline. What we usually do, will literally mark or drill a point so we know where, we got to locate that exact point again for movement. We can't kind of guess where they started.
That's fine, that's fine. So, you get to do it twice.
You kind of have to start from scratch, or Seymour can do it. I don't care. So, I don't need that much work, but...
Because this as-built is, to me, is two years old.
It is.
Okay. So, I'd like an as-built that's more current. And then if you have to shoot it again, six months later or a year later, you can see if the wall moved.
Yeah. I think, really whichever way you are inclined to decide tonight, hopefully in favor of just leaving things the way they are. I think the concern of whether or not Mr. Keating can issue a TCO or CO to allow, you know, so we don't have to wait yet to schedule Seymour to go out on site, to prepare a map, to, you know, if you could, if you could opine on the CO being issued sooner than later relative to your decision tonight, that would be very helpful. Or a TCO for a certain period of time while conditions are met. That would be very helpful.
The other thing that I've seen of walls such as this is people put ivy on it. So, weeping, well, those weeping ivy falls over the wall to soften the feel of it. Whose land is that?
I like flocks.
What's that?
I like flocks. I mean, well, look, beauty's in the eye of the beholder, right?
I'm saying, if the neighbor wanted that, would you care?
Would you plan additional ground covers or hanging ground covers at the top of the wall?
They're offered to put a landscape edge right in front of the wall.
He's going to talk, he's going to speak directly.
So, in the course of the meetings that I had with the Norelli's, I offered initially to put a planting in front of the wall since it's, there is still some of my property there. We agreed that they wanted grass right up to the wall. If, you know, putting some sort of a evergreen type of plant that grew over the wall would make them happy, I'm happy to do that. It's not a problem to make it more aesthetically pleasing. As I said, I'm flexible to do what makes sense.
Okay. The other thing I would like to see do, if we do ask you to do this additional as-built survey, is on a picture such as that, show us where the wall was supposed to end and where the wall is extended. You follow what I'm saying?
I do. I mean, this, I could probably literally do that right now by counting these blocks. So, I could draw a line right on here and hand it to you.
But I want the neighbors to be able to see where the wall is going to change.
Yeah.
That's what I'm after.
But I have a question. But can they come, it's been any, so Mr. Lesko sells, everyone sells, right? Like we just had an application. They can come in and modify, and they can extend their three-foot wall without ever coming back here. So, Mr. Lesko sells, the next person says, fantastic, I'm going to extend my three-foot wall. Am I correct that they can do that?
Yeah. I think your points also during your internal discussions were sound in that we're not here for the wall, we're here for the fill. So, the thing we, if you so opined, right, that we had to match the previous approval, we would have to move the fill. I would suggest that a freestanding wall could be considered a fence, and it's not a permit item.
But the wall was not built.
The wall was part of it.
The wall, the wall was...
Yeah, I don't want to...
Part of the approval.
Hopefully, this, that's not applicable anyway when we get to the resolution.
Right. Any other questions for the commission? If we request this survey or this line, is that post facto or do we have to keep the application open?
Well, I guess the question for the commission is, if they were to do another as-built, as Craig said, sometimes that could take four to six weeks.
For Craig to get out there and shoot an as-built?
For any surveyor, depending on workload and getting it back in the office and producing a map and printing the map and getting it down. I mean, look, sometimes it's quick, sometimes it's not quick. But I guess our point is, if you make a decision that we can have the modification that we're requesting with conditions, that those conditions don't precede the ability of Mr. Keating to sign off on the zoning plan.
This is my feeling, and it's up to you guys, too. I would like to see a more current as-built versus one that's two years old.
What are you looking for?
To see if, to see if it moved.
The wall's going to be in the same spot.
The wall's in the same exact spot.
What, what, I get your condition, but I don't think the wall is going to... You're not going to see anything. I didn't see anything.
I don't either. I don't either.
Okay. I saw the top piece move, but if you guys don't think we need it?
It can get dislodged. But I think you're on to something as a condition if this commission were to approve, you know, what's been built, or they approved the amendment. We can talk about that during deliberations. I guess you would just want to ask the Norelli's about softening the look of the wall.
Do we have to, if there's an extended period between the as-built, as he discussed, do we have to require a bond or something for that?
When you say an extended period?
If we want two as-bills.
Oh, so what you're saying is do an as-built in, let's call it, summer of two thousand nineteen?
Correct.
And then do another as-built in two thousand twenty, let's say, or?
Correct.
I guess the question is, the second as-built, what would you want shown on that second as-built?
To ensure the wall didn't move.
To ensure the wall didn't move, which is exactly what Craig said.
But let me just point out that even if the wall moved, it doesn't have anything to do with the grade.
It means, it means his statement's not, he said the ground is stable.
But why is it, why is it this commission's?
Because of the stability of the ground.
Stability of the ground.
Because we're approving different grading to the edge of the wall, so that would be a concern.
So, this commission has to approve that the wall is stable?
Yeah.
My neighbor can build a three-foot wall next to my property, and I don't have to figure out the difference.
You're not thinking about the wall, the dirt behind it.
The engineer has said it's stable. I mean, he doesn't have a CO in the house. I have more issue with a CO not being issued on the house.
Yeah.
About two feet of grading and ten percent of the property backyard. This is not a bigger bedroom. This is not a bigger garage. I mean, there's a CO issue.
May I suggest that we cover all this in deliberations?
Oh, a motion to close the area.
No, 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 hold on, hold on. Just, let's ask the Norelli's about softening the wall. Can we just ask the Norelli's about?
I think they've softened the wall.
I don't think it...
That came up. Can we just ask them about that?
But why would we opine on last thing?
Why are you arguing with me?
Because it's taking too long.
Sorry, I didn't run this. So, I'm going to assert my chair. I will make one last comment. All right. So, Mr. and Mrs. Norelli, could you just answer this one quick question? Whether or not a condition of the wall, if we were to approve this amendment, if softening the wall would be desired or not?
One of the first questions that Mr. Lesko said is that you technically, I guess, picked out the rocks from Paramount, so.
We had a choice of unilock walls or the jetty. It was not going to be a wall like around the tree. We only had the jetty option or the unilock option.
Okay.
So, we went with the unilock option.
And the jetty wasn't going to hold back the dirt, so he was going to...
So, the question on the table is, if the stipulation for approval was to soften the wall, would that be something you desired or not, something you desire?
If it was approved, we would desire it, but, you know, we don't want it approved.
Thanks for your input. I appreciate it.
Can I ask, Greg, one more?
Yeah.
You've raised the issue of a, of a CO or TCO. If, if, as I understand, the owner can live in the house, what is the issue regarding a certificate of occupancy?
I think that's up to the discretion. Although, there's Mr., he said they shouldn't be living in the house without a CO, should not be living in the house without a CO. That was Dave's response.
That's correct.
That was Dave's response. That's correct.
Okay. Were you all satisfied?
Yeah, I think the last comment, and I'll sit down. But obviously, if it's the bridge that gets us to an approval, the as-built condition is fine, but really, I find myself thinking it is, it's just dollars spent and there's no value in it. I will say that honestly. But obviously, we'd rather leave with an approval of the modification than not.
But in your professional opinion, you don't think this wall is going to move, ever? Is your reputation online?
Look, I think the wall looks stable to me. I did not design it. I did not observe it during construction.
So, that wasn't a yes?
I'm not certifying the wall, nor does the state of Connecticut require you to certify the wall.
Okay. Any more questions for the commission? It's a motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Here he's closed.
Thank you.
Moving on, general meeting, time permitting. Deliberations and possible decisions regarding the following items. Coastal site plan review number three, four, zero. Landfilling and regressing application for number four, five, four. Michael and Teresa Casolo, one, Token Beach Drive. Proposal to construct a new pool spa in terrace and to perform related site development activities within a regulated area. Public hearing closed on May twenty-eighth. Decision deadline on August first.
Okay, so...
Bonnie, I would like to hand the chairmanship back to the chairman.
So, Jeremy, any commentary, stand on this?
You may recall that this, this was the property at one Token Beach Drive, adjacent to the Token Beach Club. They got a ZBA variance for work on that house, which was previously approved by the commission. The pool was turned ninety degrees to comply with the zoning setbacks. The commission was just looking at the aspect of the pool relative to coastal site plan and landfilling and regressing. None of the work is in the flood zone.
So, some other issues are raised, but that wasn't part of this application, like the view from Token Beach?
Yeah, I was there to manage. Yes, I know.
All right. So, I read it. I didn't see any changes or modifications. Does anybody else have them?
No, I have no comments or changes. I was okay with it.
I'm seeing nobody. Everybody's okay to get a motion approved as submitted?
Motion approved as submitted. I'll stick.
Second.
Mr. Ren, all in favor?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, didn't see the...
Mr. Ren, second.
Jennifer proposes.
Thank you, thank you.
Coastal site plan review number three, four, one. Flood damage provincial application number three, nine, five. Landfilling and regressing application four, five, six. Donald and Kathy Allman, fifty-five Arrowhead Way. Proposal to raise an existing single-family dwelling, build a new house in generally the same location with a new driveway, deck, stormwater management, and septic system, and to perform related site development activities within the regulated areas. Public hearing was closed on May twenty-eighth. Decision deadline is August first, two thousand nineteen.
You may recall, the public hearing was last week. This property that the house is currently in the flood zone, and it's in the lower part of the watershed. So, engineer Doug DeVestito talked at the hearing about the desire to have full stormwater management plans waived because of its location in the watershed. The new house would comply fully with the flood regulations. And in fact, if you note on page five of the draft resolution, one of the conditions of approval is an elevation certificate submitted following completion of the improvements, such that office staff can determine that it complies with the flood regulations.
Again, pretty straightforward one. Thank you for giving that overview. I didn't have any modifications. Does anybody else?
No.
No.
All right. So, can I get a motion to approve as submitted, please?
Motion to approve this one. All second.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right. So, Swift Lane, what's the deadline? If you want to just read the title.
Oh, sure.
Sorry.
Next one, administrative, section 339, number 1-2019, Joseph Paglia Rulo, 40 Swift Lane. Proposal to create a rear building lot in association with the division of the 2.17 acre subject property under the first division section of the Connecticut General Statutes and to construct a new shared driveway. The two proposed lots under section 339 of the Darien zoning regulation have less than the required lot width at the frontage with Swift Lane.
Commission, right, to answer your question, Mr. Seeny, the hearing was closed on May 14. The commission has 65 days from the close of the hearing to make a decision. So, that would give us till mid-July to make a decision.
So, my proposal would be to wait till we have everybody on this one, because it seems like we have somewhat of a split decision coming our way based on the original deliberations? Do we expect everybody here next week?
As far as I know, everyone, yes, June 11th. We can put it on the agenda next week.
Yeah.
Certainly, in the meantime, if any commission member has thoughts, concerns or issues or things you want included, Fred and I will work on coming up with a redlined version. We'll put it on for next week.
Okay, yeah, it would be helpful, because I think we have a positive draft written based on the original, but it wasn't clear, you know, it was like a 4-2, so we were pretty close. So, if you could give them some feedback, then we know what direction we're going in for next week, instead of having to deliberate again and then wait for everybody to be there. So, that would be awesome.
Okay.
And I'll, you'll reach out to Mr. Cunningham also.
Deliberations only. Next, for the business site plan application number 1 through 6D, special permit application number 231A, landfilling and regrading application 455, George at Work LLC on Two Squabs Lane.
You know what, you can stop there.
Okay.
We'll read it and then we can-
Read it a few times.
Yeah. Okay, this is the first time we're deliberating on this?
That's correct.
You want to, so some of the issues?
Right, you may recall, the original application came in. This is a site plan and a special permit with regrading. There's, it's basically the bakery on the bottom floor, restaurant on the upper two floors. This is a part of a shared parking agreement with the adjoining property in the front. There's Amy's Appetat, has submitted shared parking agreement for the record. You may recall, as part of the original application, the handicap ramp was in the plans. Subsequent revisions turned that into a lift with a pergola over it, which went to the Architecture Review Board, who subsequently sent a letter of support for that with some details to be worked out by the Architecture Review Board. During the hearings, there were discussion about employee parking, which is in the back. I'll call it off of the Grove Street parking lot. There's going to-
Spaces.
Right, there's a few spaces which are-
Six.
Stack spaces, if you will. We talked about hours, nature of the businesses, restaurant use, requires a special permit. And I think that pretty much covers the variety of topics covered during the hearing process.
Hours, hours.
Yeah, yeah, uses and hours. Okay, who wants to start? All right, I will. So, so just to get the ramp off the radar screen, that was, as we got from the head of BBW and some comments from the first selectmen in the record, just the way it was going to be constructed wasn't up to the town standards and what they wished. The applicant then decided to build a lift, which is in there right. If the town ever wants to build a ramp itself, it can do so. I mean, it was a neat concept, but I think, you know, based on the complexities of the tree, the ramp, construction and the fact you had two property owners having to figure this out, I think the applicant made the decision to use the lift, which was subsequently approved by ARB. The whole concept of ARB was approved. I mean, I think the concept and reconstruction of the building has been long awaited. You know, there was an original application, Jeremy or Dave?
2006.
Okay, so 2006. So, this has been in the works for about 13 years in some way, shape or form. That application expired after it got extended based on some state statute that allowed, you know, the financial crisis to, commissions to continue to extend it, but this commission finally deemed it expired. When do you think that happened, like two?
Probably about two years ago.
Yeah, two or three years ago. Okay, so now we finally have a plan. It seems like a viable plan. I know there's concerns, you know, Jennifer had some concerns about the type of business. I think it is unique. I think they, it is, and that's why I submitted that just article. I think that's more based on some of the struggles in real estate. Some restaurant owners are trying to maximize the time of use and the utility of the buildings. So, I think with the proper kind of stipulations about maybe, you know, if they want to do outdoor music, they got to come to us for, you know, some approval or something like that. The hours don't concern me because of the location. You know, I, I, we both drive through town on our way home after these meetings, which run until sometimes 10:30, and town's dead. So, I wouldn't expect a, a business owner wanting to remain open to one unless it had a specialty clientele like in Ernie's or something like that, which I don't foresee based on the concept. So, those are kind of my initial thoughts. I think there is a way to kind of constrain, you know, there is some, there are some living units around that area. I think of Grove Street Plaza having some. So, we could probably put in a stipulation, just, hey, if you want to have music, come back to us and we'll, we'll discuss that like we've done with other property owners.
Yeah, I think that, I think the concept should be very interesting. I do want to stipulate hours. I do think there are living units and I, I just, I think the combination of, if it's outside, I think it's good for them to come back. But if they did want to have music like they do in Old Greenwich, Beach House has indoor music until like 11:00 on, you know, I think it's like once a month, maybe. You know, I don't necessarily think they need to come to us, but they, you know, there should be Monday through, or Sunday through Thursday should have different hours than the weekend. And like Sugar Bowl opens at 6:00, the 5:00, you know, I don't know. I go both ways. I don't, I don't really, I'm not sure how I feel about that, why it needs to be at that time. I don't know if I really care. But 1:00 AM definitely is beyond what I think is, I, so the article's good, right? I've been to those type of places in cities, and that was from a city as well. In Fairfield, you know, it's a university town. I just, we're not really a 1:00 AM town, so I don't feel comfortable with that. I mean, there's, you know, I just-
I just, I, I, my only concern, I, I hear you. My only concern is, you know, we've put some constraints based on living units and stuff like that, but not on hours of operation typically.
Well, we have done hours of operation for other-
Yeah, it really depends on the zone or the location of the specific business. More sensitivity to like the diners, which are on the Post Road with properties on Point Woods behind them. If you think of the Darien Diner, Driftwood Diner, similarly, where there's a house right behind it.
And what time do they close, do you know?
Off the top of my head?
You'd think we put, I was on Darien Diner.
11:00. I'll look it up. I did.
With why those applications?
It used to be, maybe Driftwood Diner, definitely.
I wasn't even at Driftwood.
So, maybe you, with the suggestion, since this topic's come up-
6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. I kept looking. It was a lot of 6:00 AM starts, but-
But that's, is that approved or?
This is Darien Diner.
But you're looking at just hours. That doesn't mean they're approved hours.
I think there was, you're saying there was constraints.
So, I guess what I'm getting at-
Off the top of my head, I don't-
Yeah, so what I'm getting at is if you could kind of look at some other restaurants and just kind of see what kind of stipulations we put on in the past, that would be helpful to, when we continue deliberations.
As regards the opening hour, there was a distinction made between the bakers-
Employees, yes.
-that are early to start the pressurize and the public. I don't remember what they were, but they were-
Yeah, I think if I recall, and I would just be testing my memory, the bakers would arrive at 5:00 and the public at 6-ish.
Yeah.
Open to the public at 6:00.
We got a couple other bakeries, Sono and now the Water.
Flower Water, and I know Dunkin' Donuts opens very early.
Duchess opens at 6:30 and goes to 10:00.
This is closer, if you will, think of where Dunkin' Donuts is.
Yeah.
This is-
CBD, is it CBD?
This is all CBD. Dunkin' Donuts, this property, Flower Water's CBD zone. Flower Water is, would be closer to Clock Hill Homes and closer to the upper, it's actually, he has people upstairs.
So, and I'm not looking for hours that they're open. It's the, if we put any stipulations on them.
I would look at the resolution of Flower Water and Bread. I understand that, but I'm trying to, what's in the stipulation?
We didn't, we did not, we did not regulate that.
Yeah, we didn't regulate it.
No, but this is a little different. This is a QSR that's also serving alcohol, right? This is a new, this is a new concept. We're, this is uncharted territory. So, this is not like we have a QSR that served alcohol that has this much space with outdoor music, maybe indoor music, fire pits. This is very attractive. This is a, this is an interesting place that people are going to go and hang out.
Are you talking about the closing hours or are you talking about the opening hours? Because we would just talk about opening for a minute.
Both of them.
We were just about opening.
So, so can you just get, we get the concern and would you going to look at what we did and other stuff and kind of pull what we did?
You can also, maybe Jeremy, look at cold fire pizza, which is not around anymore. So, if we put something on that.
You know, my opinion, I thought that the presentation looked fine and parking was okay. I did love the ramp, but, you know, and I hope that they'll, the town can work on that going forward. So, that was a great idea. And then for the hours, I think I would probably, you know, let them decide. And I don't think it's really going to be open as long as the applicant may be indicated. But I might just say, you know, 6:00 till like 11:00 PM would be more my comfort zone for it, but I'm not adhering to that by, for anything. So, we'll take a look at what you guys see, what have been around for like other places. And the live music, yes, I think outdoor would be important to go with.
Anybody else? All right, so kind of pointing towards a positive with some stipulations and conditions.
Great. Next?
Yep.
Okay, amendments to the zoning map put forth by the Darien Planning and Zoning Commission. Proposal to amend the Darien zoning map to include certain municipal-owned properties.
Can we stop there? You don't have to.
Okay, no problem. I was going to just finish that second.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay. It just says, fulfill the municipal function in the municipal use overlay zone, the MU, as provided in section 420 of the Darien regs.
So, this is one I wanted to maybe punt until, kept here also, because again, we're kind of close, unless anybody else had something to add tonight. But I think, well, this one doesn't have a deadline.
Correct. It's a commission-initiated zone change, so technically, there's no deadline.
Unless somebody want to share something tonight, I thought maybe we push this one until Kelly's-
I'm trying to pick it for this.
One quick question. Is, is this old senior center site, is that part of it or no?
And when you say the old, the Old Town Hall Homes at the corner between-
The old senior center site.
Edgerton? Nope, that is not listed here.
So, it's not part of the school? It's, it's just a freestanding park?
Well, let me rephrase that. The, let me, let me correct myself. The old, when you call the old senior center site-
Oh, isn't that part of the middle school?
That is part, technically part of the Middlesex Middle School property. So, yes, it would be part of the property to be-
MU zone.
MU zone.
Does that include the cottage?
That property does include the cottage.
Looks like it does, yes.
The cottage is on the same property. They have a separate lease area, but cottage is on the same property as the school.
Okay.
Is that okay? Wait until-
Yeah, it's great.
Okay. And then-
Discussion of the CGS 8-24 referral process?
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
You skipped, you skipped the 14 other ones.
Oh, apologies. Okay, sorry. Oh, I thought that was all one. Moving on from the MU zone, we're going to the amendments to the Darien zoning regulations, COZR number 1-2019 and the Darien zoning map, COZM number 1-2019, put forth by the Darien Planning and Zoning Commission. Proposal to comprehensively amend, reorganize and renumber the town's zones.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, so where do you guys, there was one outstanding question we have for the service business. Were you able to?
We think we have an answer here.
Okay, so just to be clear, that is number?
Two, 2A.
2A, okay.
Right, we talked about 2A, combining service business, service business east. And as part of that, there was a question of the requirement for 1,200 square feet of indoor customer seating. And you may recall, as part of the record, there was a lengthy memo dated February 15th, prepared by myself, Glenn Chalder and Fred Donait, and that was, I think, 62 pages. And because it kind of listed all the changes-
Understood.
And how they would be affected and redlined. And when we looked at that proposal, it did talk about the service business zone. And it talked about at the bottom of page 10 and the top of page 11, what the proposal was, which is to merge service business east, which is on the eastern end of the Boston Post Road, and the four business, service business zones throughout town into one service business zone. And with a specific requirement that retail food establishments not be allowed in that zone, which traditionally they have not been. The consolidation would allow the following uses. They're not the same uses allowed in each zone. So, Glenn had to figure out, okay, which uses would be allowed. And so we talked about that. And one of the things Glenn talked about was the requirement for restaurants to have at least 1,200 square feet of indoor space devoted to customer tables and seating was removed. That was part of the proposal, because you may recall that we talked about Roost and Sono Bakery and customer seating area and convenience food service. We were trying to get away from the chairs and the-
So, in both, in both zones, if they were to combine, that would have been removed?
So, as Fred's noted, there is a provision right now in both zones for that. The commission can keep it as is, if you wished. The proposal was to remove it. And currently, section 660, which is the service business zone, does allow restaurants with 1,200 square feet of indoor space. And the service business east zone, which is section 670, also has that. So, if the issue here is the commission is now distinguishing different types of restaurants, in the current regs, there's restaurant and convenience food service. The new regs would be restaurant, quick service. So, you'd have to make it clear that both restaurants and quick service restaurants would require 1,200 square feet. So, the commission could do that as part of, if you wished.
Got it. So, we can maintain the-
You can maintain the limit, you could eliminate the limit, you could decide, forget it, we're not combining the zones, we'll just leave it. So, that really-
All right, thanks for-
There's a number of choices.
All right, so that's one I kind of, go ahead if you have any-
I was going to say, what, I'm thinking out loud now, but what would be the, what was sort of the reason for the 1,200 square feet, just not to have small food service places?
You heard, yeah.
And then, what would be the pros and cons of keeping it or removing it?
So, removal, I think it does not exist in other zones.
Correct.
And we are moving towards a, the ability to QSRs to exist, okay? And also allowing them now a little more seating if they can prove they have the power.
But not the pop-up everywhere.
I'm sorry?
But not the pop-up everywhere.
No, but I mean, just, so that, that's been the direction we've been going. So, I think that's the argument through removing. The reason it was there?
Mr. Maslin, you may recall testified at one of the public hearings about his belief on why it might have been, you may recall, his, his estimation that it could have been relative to McDonald's-
Fast food.
And fast food, where many, many years ago, they didn't have a lot of indoor customer seating area. That was his hypothetical or hypothesis that, that could have been written in response to that.
Do you guys have any recollection or?
I do not. Dave might have some, but I think the question for the commission is, as we've struggled with, the, the best example is Roost. They have a very large indoor seating area, which is, right now, there's a limit on how many seats they can include. The commission said, now, that doesn't make any sense. You have this very big area with only eight chairs. So, in this case, the commission is saying you want at least 1,200 square feet for a restaurant. So, I guess that's the question is, does, now, would you put the limit on quick service as well? I presume so, because whether you order off a menu board or from a waiter, I think-
But why would it exist only in the service business zone? I think that's what we came down, that's when we were working through kind of the iterations with Mr. Chalder.
Right, it does. Now, one thing it does, if you think of Bertucci's is there now, Duchess is there now, those are fairly, compared to downtown, fairly large restaurants. Duchess is there now, those are fairly, compared to downtown, fairly large restaurants.
And the diners, both diners are.
And both diners are, are then, so you're, there's a little more room to work, you're more likely possibly to see a large restaurant on the outskirts where there's a little more room than in downtown where there might not be.
Now, correct me, that, the, where Roost is, is not service business.
Roost is a neighborhood business, so.
Correct, which is a whole.
Which doesn't even allow restaurants currently.
How about Blue Wave Taco?
Blue Wave Taco, Service Business East, that got a variance from this requirement because it was such a small property.
He said like, that ever wanted to turn into a drive-up coffee shop, I'm just guessing.
Right.
Whatever. You know, you couldn't, you'd have to get another variant, so. All right, so this, well, does anybody have any thoughts? I mean, I think this.
Combine them, eliminate the minimum.
You want to.
Yes, combine them and eliminate.
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in agreement there.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I wouldn't combine them.
So we're kind of moving in that direction? Let's see what Mr. Cunningham, but this is, you know.
This seemed to be the most controversial of all the proposals put forth.
MU too, but.
Right. In terms of, the neighbors' concern is if you eliminate the minimum, any type of restaurant, go ahead.
Okay.
I don't think any, I don't think any service business restaurants in every neighborhood.
What's that little zone that?
Yeah, that, well, that's certainly the question.
I don't think they should be popular.
Hold on, what'd you say?
I just don't think, we, we worked our tails off to get, to combine retail and restaurants into a sense of place. To get it all together, to get it into shopping centers, to get it into federal, to get it into Palmer's and Corbin in, in, in a district. The neighborhood business district, which is Roost in that area, I think looks fantastic. I think the one that's over by Token Eat by Five Mile Road, I think serves its purpose. To have these things pop up in different spots, I think is a colossal mistake.
No, I mean, they're, remember, they're allowed. If they need to be twelve, I mean, this is allowed.
Understood.
And so it's, it's, and these are, remember, people bought properties within these service business districts with these provisions allowed, right? So that's what caused the problem.
You don't want.
In a previous application. So it's not like we're creating service businesses to pop up. It's existing service businesses which allow restaurants just twelve hundred. So, you know, and there are some, maybe, maybe this week, we can look at kind of the other combinations, tick and tie, you know, or review.
Yeah.
You know, what the difference is. But I, you know, the reason we went in this direction and our consultant went in this direction is that they were really, really similar. And it didn't make, it didn't really make sense to have service business east and service business. Just think of the Post Road right there, right? So that's where this came from. But, so we'll, we'll kind of punt on this one with a little more, you know, thinking and clarification, if that's okay. The rest were, other than MU.
Hotel motel, hotel motel.
Oh, I hate hotel.
Oh, yeah, I still want to remove hotel motel because I think that there was the point that there might someday be the option of a good location coming up for a small hotel or motel, but I wanted to remove it from the zones that it's in now. So if there, and that it wouldn't obviously exclude any applicant from coming to the commission on a special permit basis or variance coming forward. But I think for now, I wouldn't want it to be an as of right in any zone.
All right, so it's as of right in a couple zones of.
Well, it's by special permit.
By special permit. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, not as of right.
Okay, so it's, it's, and the requirement needs five acres.
Correct.
We're not changing that, right?
That's correct. There's no proposal to change that. Is, for example, one of the zones is service business. Service business zones allow hotels and inns, but you need a minimum of five acres.
Right, so this is what we were just talking about for the restaurants, the twelve hundred square feet.
It's not five acres, though.
Correct. I just didn't want it to even be an option.
All right. It's there. I don't like, if the commission thinks it's okay to be there, I don't like the idea of removing it and expecting somebody to come in and change the reg. So what do, you spoke in favor of it last time, if that's correct, Jennifer?
I spoke in favor of keeping it, yeah. I mean, I, I can see the point, though.
I get it.
Because, you know, but I feel like, I feel like if we take it out, we're just going through the brain damage of having to do two layers, right?
Put it back in again.
Put it back in again, plus get a special permit.
You already have a special permit requirement.
Right.
And a five acre.
And a five acre requirement. So it's like doing more work.
That's right.
Just leave it at that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're kind of moving, yeah.
No, I understand.
Okay.
And then seven, seven doesn't matter. Seven goes back to leave it alone because the word hotel motel.
Right, and that's what Fred and I will have to figure out is that if you're thinking of the concept, leave it alone. Then you say, okay, leave the parking requirement in there, and that's the legwork we'll do behind the scenes is, as we.
Domino effect, we'll call it.
On here, it was just seven and eight were transcribed.
This is why they go to school for this kind of stuff.
Right, is to try to get the sense of the commission, and then we'll put together the final.
And the rest were pretty straightforward, if I'm, like, everybody was kind of unanimous.
I think we pretty much agree then.
Okay, so what we have left on the table is basically the MU zone, and we'll discuss that next time.
As of being twelve.
Okay, good.
Now for the discussion of the CGS eight dash twenty-four referral process.
So I asked Jeremy to put this on the agenda. So we have Ox Ridge School coming down the pipeline. They're actually going to the RTM for a financing approval, to file financing approval.
It's, it's, not funny, you have to state something with the state to just state a number.
Yeah.
So you can get in the.
Queue.
In the queue to get grants.
Okay, so they're kind of moving along. They hired, did they hire the architect yet?
Yes, they did.
Okay, so the reason why now we like to, I think the board of selectmen actually was going to discuss or has discussed.
Last night, it was on their agenda to discuss sending the referral to the commission.
Okay, so this is mandatory referral. It's a town-owned property. If there's any sort of improvement, we have to weigh in whether or not it's consistent with the town plan. The question is, because we did run into Little Waves and Highland Farm, what do commissioners want to see to, because there are no kind of schematics or anything. But the concept is basically to tear down a school structure and build a school structure somewhere on the same site. So is that good enough to?
Yes. I think that this is not taking a field and.
No, I just want to make sure.
Because it's removing a school and putting another school up.
So we'll, we'll put that on the agenda next week, okay?
Great.
Project status update, you got anything new?
Dave and I were out at Mr. Vicaro's property, three sixty-four Boston Post Road, which is the old sewing machine shop. It's coming along nicely.
Yeah.
You've seen it. The plantings are in, they're finishing up. Orange Theory, we expect to, I think their zoning permit is in the office to be reviewed, and so that's coming along nicely. So that's good. The work on the property behind it, three twenty, three thirty post, is also a lot of work going on in those office buildings that's also coming along.
Some tenants have already signed it.
Yes, there's a number of tenants that have already committed to that property, which is great, very exciting.
Followed kind of.
I think we found your phone. Hello?
Dave, anything else you can think of? I'm trying to think of any. Old Town Hall Home's going to get started any day. We've approved the foundation permit. So you saw that they've demoed the existing building. The foundation should get started shortly. And then, once they get working, we expect that it will continue on for well over a year.
I can drop it off at her house. I can drop it off at her house.
No, no, no. Yeah, we, well, I don't know if it's hers.
Is it Amy?
We'll figure that out after the meeting.
It wasn't the on our phone call.
I couldn't, they didn't pick up, I was too late to grab.
Oh, okay.
Call the number manager.
I can't because it's locked. So we'll discuss that after the meeting, sorry. You did the project status update, calendar update next week?
We do meet next week. It's more deliberations, fairly short agenda. We'll have the Ox Ridge referral. We'll talk more about some of the pending items. We'll try to get a draft resolution for Two Squab Lane. And we'll put Forty Swifs on, one or two sets minutes, fairly light agenda. We don't meet on the eighteenth. John Louizos will be with us on the twenty-fifth to discuss in executive session pending litigation, and we have a number of public hearing items that night.
Okay, so you didn't, there's no need to add an executive special meeting because the executive session won't be ready.
He's still working on preparing a couple items.
No other business, right? Question to adjourn?
Wait a minute, we had three hands go up.
I, I heard Jennifer and Mr. Ren in a sec.
Okay, thank you.
We're adjourned. Good night, TD seventy-nine.